Welcome to the Lancaster City Council Meeting. Call to order, the City Council Successor Agency Financing and Power Authority Meeting. Now, how's that for economy? City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly Mann.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Motion to excuse Molly.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. The invocation, Luke, would you be so kind?
I think my job descriptions do for an update. Would you back your heads with me, please? Lord Jesus, most gracious and merciful, I thank you for this opportunity that you've given me tonight to pray on behalf of my city. Lord, I don't take this responsibility lightly, and it's with that on my heart that I appeal to you as the sovereign Lord over all creation, the name at which every knee bows and every tongue confesses, Lord, that you would let your spirit loose here tonight. Our walls say that we trust in you, and, Lord, we pray that we would conduct ourselves such that that would be evident in our lives here this evening. I pray, Lord, that you would bring a spirit of conviction and clarity and purpose to this room tonight. Lord, where there is disagreement, I pray that you would guide us towards resolution. I pray, Lord, that you would bring people together to not shy away from issues, but to conduct themselves with a reverence and a submission to the example that you left for us amidst our disagreements here tonight. I pray, Lord Jesus, also that you would foster a spirit of unity. Lord, that Lancaster would be a testimony of your glory and your grace and your goodness on this earth. I pray, Lord, that you would also, once again, guide our leaders to be the men and the women that you've called them to be, to be ordained by your spirit, and to look to you in every decision that they make, Lord. I love you and I serve you, and I pray all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Angela, would you do the...
Please, Stormy McCall, do it. Just place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me.
Pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for
City Manager, anything to be removed?
If you wanted to announce the continuance of a couple of items?
Yes, I will, I'll do that. PH1 is being continued to a future meeting, and CA1 is dropping off.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Any items on the consent calendar?
Other than if we have speaker cards?
Okay, let's vote 4, 7, and 8. It's currently comprised, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised, pulling CC4, 7, and 8.
It's unanimous. 4. You're speaking on 4 and 8, is that correct?
Well, since I only have three minutes, yeah, I'm speaking at 4. I think it's 7 and 8?
Indeed.
6, 7, and 8? But I only have three minutes, so...
That's all you got.
I'd like to have three minutes separate for 4, but I come up here every time and vote no against the destruction of records. This time especially because of some, there happens to be some high priority things going on right now that pertain to that, but not just because of that, but because of, it is a felony, isn't it, to destroy records that they know are to be presented in any kind of a case that has to do with any kind of fraudulent, anything to do with fraud, including medical fraud, education fraud, securities fraud, conspiracy to commit these, bond fraud, insurance fraud, tax fraud, mail fraud, voter fraud, judicial fraud, embezzlement, real estate fraud, business fraud, which, that other, last time you guys had a little, a thing on the dog, 101 dog tricks. I think that should have been entitled 101 Business Tricks, and, because it also showed the IT, the way that they use the IT services, e-services, muni services. All these things, I think, need to be investigated, and if you destroy the records, you won't be able to do that. Like I said, I've come up here every time about destruction of records. A lot of these, there's a lot of cases that involve all of these particular things that I just brought up, and so I think anything other than a no vote on that would indicate that there's something to hide here, because these, also, hold on just a second, the manager administration fraud also, false imprisonment is also another one that should be, come underneath this, and I think that you should have to post a public hearing saying that you're going to destroy records, so that anybody that has any kind of claims or any kind of, anything, you know, any kind of, anything through the courts or anything, has a chance to come up here and, and say that they don't want their records to be destroyed. Also, there is, I'd like to say that there's also no statute of limitations on fraud, and so that's another reason why I don't think that these records should be destroyed. They also involve cases involving grand theft, kidnapping, trafficking, cases against veterans, the elderly, social security, social services, all these that need to be investigated.
Thank you.
And also, the $500,000 deal on here is also another tax fraud.
Mr. Bozegian, are you destroying records?
In a transparent, based on the law and your policies, that's the intent of the law, so that everyone knows that what is being destroyed.
You know, a simple no would have sufficed.
I broke the first rule that Lou Bozegian told me. Answer the question and then stop.
Thank you. Is there a motion on 4 and 8?
It's...
Shall we do 7, Tim?
No, Fran's talking on 7.
Okay. Motion to approve CC4, CC8?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Thank you. Oh, it's unanimous.
Oops.
Okay.
I went too far. Maybe pull out a bit.
Oh, you go up?
No, no, it's okay, I just gotta... What am I doing here? Okay. There, okay, thank you. Let's see, 7. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Saraseras, and I'm happy to be here. Mr. Mayor, pleased to meet you and see you again. I know I met you a long time ago, but I just, Vice Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, and staff. I just had, where is it now? I lost my notes. Okay, well, basically, it's on the lighting, so I don't read my notes. There's this amount of money, and like I said, I don't have my, I have my notes here, but I lost them, and I lost my mind. Oh, here it is, okay. I just want to clarify something. You're paying $145,980.20 for street lighting, operation, and maintenance. I just want to know, does this include the LED lights, per se, per individuals, and for how long is the maintenance?
This does not, that'll be a separate item, which is the LED retrofit. This, because we're taking the streetlights over from Edison, we need a truck that's able to maintain the poles and the lights and such. There is an opportunity to buy a used truck that's hybrid, that's for the purpose, at a good price, so that's what's the action before council.
So, okay. So, okay, that's, for this one, that's fine. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Fran, you could ask him, when is he going to get those LED lights up?
Yeah, when are you going to get them up? And where are they going to be?
Thank you, Mayor.
And who is going to do it?
We're in the process right now, we've gone through a couple requests for information. We have a successful bidder that we're going through and working with, and we will be presenting that with the, to the council very shortly, and once that occurs, then you'll start seeing them up. And we anticipate that in the next two months? In the next six months it will happen.
Six months? Okay. Six months? Okay.
Thank you. Got it.
Thank you very much.
So, next meeting, call me first, we'll have a few more of these.
Motion to approve CC8?
CC7?
Second?
I'll second.
Seven?
Who's doing the staff report on that?
Thank you.
See, Jeff, you're not the new guy anymore.
All right, I'm excited about that title now. We'll have to give that to somebody else, I guess. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm excited to be back in front of the council tonight on this item, requesting approval of the next phase of the senior center expansion upgrade project, which continues to be a very successful partnership with the county. The specific request tonight is to approve a professional services agreement with Sawyer Construction Associates to start the design phase of the project. A selection process was followed, and Sawyer Construction Associates was ranked number one because of their team's experience and their understanding, detailed understanding of the senior center's needs. We anticipate to be back in front of the City Council in March, April, to start the construction phase of the project, and then completion of the construction in September. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeff. Fran?
No, I have something to say about...
Well, of course, this is your deal. Sure, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
You were a big factor in getting this done.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. I have this, okay, again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I guess you all know me, my name is Fran. You have here, you're giving Sawyer Construction $196,142.40, which includes a 6% contingent fee. Now, my question to you is, does this money include money already spent by our city, Lancaster, on the drawings and engineering that she did over there, that she has worked on? And if it's not, we have, we have a budget of $1,000, $1,500 to renovate our senior center. So, if you take that off, it's going to only leave us with $1,300, which, I mean, we're getting lower and lower on our amounts to be able to build or restructure, not restructure, wrong word, to add on to our senior center. And also, wanted to know, you have four county staffers working on it, and you have to have, and you also have three city staffers working on it, and I want to know who they were, if I, if I can so be told. And also, 15 years, Sawyer Construction Company has put a 15-year life cycle cost over, for this, what does this include? Does this include, you know, the insurance that the building's going to stay up for 15 years, or what does that mean?
So, the conceptual drawings that our capital program manager put together was just concept drawings, so the design contract that's before us tonight will actually include all design, engineering, what exactly the senior center's needs are for that, so that'll be anticipated. The remaining money will go towards construction costs, so the group that's reviewing all this will make sure that, that the money's spent appropriately and the design is done within budget.
Within the, within the $1,300?
And the representatives from the city and county is Gabe Navarres, Marisa Diaz, and I think it's Warren Bennett, our city building official. And then the four county representatives, I'm going to have to ask...
I don't have the agreement with me, but Kevin Webb from the county is on the board.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, who are you?
Oh, I'm Marisa Diaz, I'm the capital program manager with the city of Lancaster. Again, Kevin Webb from the county is participating. Christine, I think her last name is Borzaga. Ellie is also on the board, I forgot her last name.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then there's one other person who I can't remember who it is off the top of my head.
We can get that.
But we can, yeah, we can.
Now, okay, my other question, oh, the 15-year situation, what does that mean?
Well, when we did our request for qualifications and proposals, one of the things we asked for was an estimate on life cycle cost, and that was to help us decide who was looking at what different aspects of the type of construction we wanted to do, and, and what their opinion was that they could provide within our budget. And so, it was more for decision-making, not so much what's eventually going to go in.
Okay. So, that's not the lifespan of the construction?
No, not necessarily, no. And we use that information to determine, like, maintenance costs and other things over the life of 15 years.
Okay. That's it. I thank you very much. And, oh, I have one more question. Are you going to be showing drawings, the conception drawings that you have now, present, you know, that you're going to be using now?
Well, we're, after we award and we get Sawyer on, under contract, we'll be meeting with the county, we'll have several meetings to talk about what it is exactly they want to do, and then we'll have different phases of the design submitted to us, so we'll get like 30%, 60%, 90%. We don't plan on releasing those to the public necessarily, but we can if that's what we want to do.
Would I be able to get a set?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I can invite you to some of our meetings if you'd like.
I would like that, very much so. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. God bless you all.
Okay, is that it? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB1?
I'll second.
Let's vote. CPH2, Public Hearing was previously opened on January 10th, so this is a continuation of it. Oh, did I skip over? Oh, it's our conservation printing on both sides of the page, huh? Okay. Good move. Any cards? Let's waive the, the report, is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB2?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. CPH1, previously opened January 10th, and we have one, okay, we have this, who's doing the staff report of that?
Mayor and council, attached for your approval is an ordinance establishing, an ordinance establishing the requirement that all homes be built with, to the net zero standard, which means that the energy they produce is equal to the energy they consume on site. In addition, the next item on the agenda is, approves a fee associated with the program that Patty will explain. This ordinance before you represents months of work from the city staff, Planning Commission led by Mr. Vos, the stakeholders such as the BIA and a lot of their members being involved in the, in the creation of this process, and developed, which I believe to be a win-win situation with this ordinance. Because of their work, I believe we have a much better product. As way of background, in 2011, Mayor, you and your council set the goal of to be the first net zero city in the world, and as a result of that, we've instituted a number of programs and policies to accomplish that goal. From Solar Lancaster, which today has installed 4,500 residential rooftop solars on our community's homes, to the public-private partnerships with BYD, KB, which has generated a number of jobs as well as investment in the community, behind-the-meter projects with the city that have generated nearly 100, or immediately 100% of our energy as the city, so we can proudly say that every kilowatt hour we use as a city is 100% renewable. We've put schools, or we've put solar on school sites, 20 different different school sites throughout the community, general plan changes to allow development for solar energy, creating nearly 1,000 jobs, acquisition of streetlights, and a pending LED retrofit, electrification of the bus fleet with AVTA, mandatory solar on each home, which was the groundbreaking ordinance last year, the formation of Lancaster Choice Energy, which allows us to procure and sell energy to all of our residents, and now, the Net Zero Energy Home Ordinance, which we believe is the next logical step in that progression. As with each of the above-mentioned projects, we believe this ordinance not only doesn't cost the taxpayer any money, it saves the resident money on a long-term basis, and that's been one of our major goals in this process, is that anybody can go green by spending a lot of money at it. We have done an excellent job through your leadership of instituting these green projects while saving money and/or generating a new revenue stream. We believe the ordinance before you does that as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Patty Garibay, who's the lead on the project, and she'll tell you about the details of the project.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before I provide details on the options that we've created for home builders to meet a ZNE requirement, I wanted to first start off with the recommendation that we are providing the council for consideration tonight. Our recommendation is that we introduce ordinance number 1020, amending titles 15 and 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, establishing requirements for the construction of zero-net energy, single-family residences. Builders will have three options for meeting the ZNE requirement with or without a solar component, and I will go into that detail in just a few moments. The second recommendation that we're making tonight is that we remove the existing rear yard landscaping and irrigation requirements that are included in the Lancaster Municipal Code for new single-family residential units that comply with the ZNE requirement. At the request of the Planning Commission, staff met with the BIA, with the local building community on several occasions. We met to discuss options, alternatives, and to really come up with a mutually agreeable solution, options, ways that we could meet a ZNE requirement that would work for everyone, for all the stakeholders, you know, that would allow the city to continue to move towards its ZNE goals, that would allow the building community to continue to build, and most importantly, that would save our residents' money. Through those conversations, we came up with three different options, which we think are extremely feasible, which everyone was very excited about, and which I'll share in a later part of my presentation, but the state is actually looking at some of these options for the future. So, under option one, what we've created is basically an all-solar option. What we're asking the home builders to do under this option is to install a solar system that's equal to 2 watts per square foot minimum for the house that they're building. One of the things that I mentioned here is the Title 24 Energy Efficiency requirements. One of the changes that the state has made, starting January 1st, is a home builder is required to build homes that are 15% more energy efficient than they were last year. The caveat, though, they actually have an option now, so they can either build a 15% more efficient home, or they can install a solar system that's equal to 2 kilowatts or larger to meet that requirement. So, under option one, assuming that the home is, that the home builder installs a solar system that's 2 kilowatts or greater, they would not only be meeting the city's requirement, but they would also be meeting the Title 24, the state's requirement. Option two is our mitigation fee option. Through our conversations, again, with the building industry, with the BIA, they really wanted to have different options, different avenues for meeting the same goal, and so they were very interested in just having a straight mitigation fee. They thought, you know, in some instances, their customers were not interested in solar, but they wanted to have that benefit for them. And so, under this scenario, a home builder would basically, they would still be required to meet that Title 24 Energy Efficiency requirement, so they'd have to do that 15% upgrade for the home that they're building, and then, in order to meet the, the city's requirement, they would pay an in-lu fee that is equal to 2 watts, or I'm sorry, a fee that's equal to the amount of, to the square footage times $1.40 for the mitigation fee, and that would be used by, or actually, so one of the options that we have, because we are a community-choice aggregator here at the city of Lancaster, we buy and sell energy for our customers on a daily basis, we're able to build utility-scale projects. So, that in-lu fee would basically be used to continue those efforts and to build large utility-scale projects. Option three is what we call our hybrid option, so for the homeowner to, I'm sorry, for the home builder to meet that state requirement, they would install a solar system that's equal to 2 kilowatts, meeting that requirement from the state, and what they would do is pay a one-time ZNE mitigation fee that would offset the balance of what's due for that home. So, for example, a 2,500-square-foot home, they would install a 2-kilowatt system, which is equal to 1,000 watts, they would pay a mitigation fee for 1,500 square feet for that home. The Planning Commission was very interested in us creating a builder cost breakdown. This is something that we started internally as staff, and we refined in working with the Planning Commission with Chairman Vos, and then refined even more as we worked with the building industry and with, with our local builders. We looked at four different scenarios in terms of the square feet of a home, so we looked at a 2,000-square-foot home, 2,500, 3,000, 3,500-square-foot home, and we looked at each of those options and what the cost would be to the builder. I'm only going to focus in on the 2,500-square-foot home, but under option one, that's the all-solar option, a home builder, and we made a couple of assumptions here, which I will share, we assumed that the rooftop solar would cost them $4 per watt, the state average is between $2 and $6, so we used the $4, we thought that was a good average number. Assuming that they pay $4 per watt, that solar system would cost them $20,000. The ITC credit is a solar investment credit that's available to either a home builder, homeowner, or anybody who installs a solar system. We deducted the $6,000 that they would be eligible to apply for in that scenario. Because a home builder would be meeting the state's requirement through this scenario, we deducted the $3,750 that they would be saving. The city already, as you know, requires home builders to install a solar system, and so we went ahead and deducted the $4,000 for that 1 kilowatt that they would be required to install now, and subtracted the ITC credit, so that would, we subtracted $2,800 there. Finally, because we, you know, we're considering removing our landscape requirement, we asked the building community, what does it cost to install landscaping now on a typical Lancaster home? They said $6,000, and so that's where we plugged that number in. And I also failed to mention the, the savings for not complying with the 2017 standard, staff was, that was a question that we asked the building industry, what does it cost you to meet that 15% energy efficiency requirement? They said it was, it would be between $1.50 and $2, so we used a $1.50 figure and came up with that number. So, under option one, as you can see, the net cost for the home builder would be $1,450, or an additional cost per square foot of 58 cents for that 2,500-square-foot home. Under option two, the mitigation fee option, under the scenario, the home builder would pay a mitigation fee at $1.40 per square foot, multiplied by the 2,500 square feet, which is equal to 3,500, they would be required to meet the state's, state's energy efficiency requirement, that's $3,750. We subtracted the ordinance that already exists in the city, as well as the landscape requirement, if that's removed. The net cost to the home builder would be negative $1,550, or a savings of 62 cents per square foot under that scenario. Finally, under option three, the hybrid solar and mitigation fee, again, assuming that the home builder installs a system that is, that costs them $4 per watt, that solar system would cost them $8,000 for a 2-kilowatt system, they would be eligible for the ITC credit of $2,400, a mitigation fee, they would pay a mitigation fee for the 1,500, or 1,500 square feet that are not met through that 2-kilowatt system, and that is equal to $2,100. So, savings for not complying with the 2017 standard, $3,750, our ordinance requiring 1 kilowatt is deducted, as well as the landscape requirement. Under this scenario, the home builder would be saving $4,850, or $1.94 per square foot to build that home, as a net zero home. I made two, we have two different arrows pointing here. On the high end, a home builder could expect to spend $1.59 per square foot if they chose to go with the all-solar option. If they chose to go with the hybrid solar mitigation fee option, they would save $2.40 to build a ZNE home. The Planning Commission was very interested in us sharing, you know, what the... The Planning Commission was very interested in us sharing, you know, what the, what the savings would look like for a residential solar customer. They are pretty substantial. They were, they were very interested in seeing what those numbers look like. Because we are the city's energy provider, we were able to access that information. So what we did is we actually looked at a neighborhood that had two homes that were the same size. They're newer homes, one home having solar, one without. The home on the left is a, you know, typical domestic customer, not, no solar. At the end of a full year, they spent just under $1,000 for their energy. Their neighbor on the right, who has a solar system which is actually properly sized for their 2,500-square-foot home, they ended up paying just under $40 for a full year of energy. Comparison two is a 3,000-square-foot home. Under this scenario, again, on the left, we have a domestic customer without solar in the green and a regular, and a solar customer in the blue. This neighbor ended up spending just under $2,000 on their energy for a full year. The neighbor on the right with a solar system spent just under $600. Now, one thing I would like to point out is this system is actually smaller than what we would recommend. So what we're suggesting is that they would need 2 watts per square foot of home, so this home would actually require a 6-kilowatt system. And under this scenario, assuming that, that they had a bigger system, this number would likely go down. Finally, comparison three, 3,500-square-foot home. Again, the neighbor on the left, they have a standard energy customer, no solar. At the end of a full year, they ended up spending just under $1,800. The neighbor on the right with a solar system, they actually ended up saving just under $100. The interesting thing to point out here is that this system is actually smaller than what we would recommend for this home. So it just goes to show that, you know, building solar systems is not an exact science. It really depends on usage and the homeowner, if they have a, you know, I would expect that this probably, this person probably is very energy efficient, conservative, they probably don't have a pool and things like that, and so they ended up saving money at the end of the year. So what are the next steps? Next steps include adoption of the zero-net energy mitigation in-lu fee, which I mentioned, recommending $1.40 per square foot of home built. The second next step is to get approval from the California Energy Commission. This is considered a reach code, something that goes above and beyond their existing requirements, and so we are required to do a cost and feasibility study. Staff is very familiar with this process. We actually did a cost and feasibility study when we went through our solar project a couple of years ago. We've actually been in conversations with the CEC since the inception of this project. They're very excited to see what we're doing in Lancaster. They agree, you know, with everyone else in the world that they're, that we are innovative, that we look at things from a different perspective, and they actually believe that this is something that we can, that when this becomes a mandatory requirement in 2020, can really take on a statewide, you know, it can, it can become statewide policy. So they're very interested to see what we're doing here. And then finally, we would get approval from the CEC and make this a mandatory requirement.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Joseph Sullivan. I work for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 11, and the National Electrical Contractors Association of Greater Los Angeles and Ventura Counties. IBW 11 represents a little over 12,000 men and women, and NICA, the contractors, represent about 350 contractors from billion-dollar businesses to very small businesses. And I want to start out by thanking you for the life-changing careers you've created through your commitment to renewable energy, especially solar and utility-scale solar. You have no idea, I see the men and women weekly whose lives you've changed. So IBW and NICA both strongly support ordinance 1020. We think the investment in sustainable energy not only improves our air quality, not only does it make great financial sense, it also creates many important jobs. In instances, these jobs are really well-paying. They have full family medical, excellent benefits, and excellent retirement. Most of them include, or they all include, an apprenticeship program. It's a multi-year apprenticeship program. We spend about $30,000 per student. The student has a broad, diverse education that prepares them to work in the electrical industry for life, not just temporary solar installers, but the apprenticeship is really the alchemy that creates the gold, that is, these lifelong careers. They can work anywhere in the U.S. and Canada as members. Their training occurs at our net-zero facility. It's the largest electrical training institute in the country. We have more apprentices than new ones, net-zero building, and it's a living laboratory for new technologies, including a state-of-the-art microgrid. The data clearly shows that thoughtful energy policies do not burden economies. We've seen it over and over with California. They strengthen economies. To meet the demands of the utility-scale solar in Lancaster, brought about by the Renewable Portfolio Standard of the State, IBW and NICA has recruited hundreds of men and women from the Antelope Valley. Many of these were underemployed, and now they have a wonderful career and, after earning their way onboard. The time's right for this policy. Solar prices have steeply declined over the last five, seven years. Interest rates are still at all-time lows. And I just want to close by saying, being independent of dirty oil is one of the most patriotic things we can do for our country. We reduce our dependence on these nations that claim they're our allies while simultaneously espousing beliefs that they're countrymen, makes their countrymen want to wipe us off the map. This is a very patriotic thing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 1020, amending titles 15 and 17.
We do need to close the public hearing before we proceed, if we could.
I'm sorry, what?
We need to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
No, make your motion again.
Okay. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1020, amending titles 15 and 17.
I'll second that motion.
Great, unanimous. Thank you. CPH 2.
No speaker cards.
Waive the staff report?
Yeah.
And?
Should we let everybody know?
I'm opening the, I'm opening, am I opening the public?
The public hearing was opened at our last meeting.
So we need to do?
So I'm closing.
We do need to close it.
Closing the public hearing? I'm sorry.
There being no public comment.
Should we tell everyone what we're doing with this?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's have a short staff report. Patty?
Please do. I think that would be appropriate.
But Patty, I'm, I'm really getting old, so you have to slow down.
That was really good. It's just, I'm so excited, you know, I want to get it all out.
It really is a huge thing.
Absolutely.
But I don't need the numbers. I just want you to tell us about it.
Sure. So, so as I mentioned, we developed the, the ZNE mitigation fee. We actually created this fee through a couple of different factors. Number one, we have a lot of relationships throughout the state. We're working on a lot of different projects at the city, and so we have contacts with the state, and they tell us, you know, what, we ask them the question, what are people paying for utility-scale projects? And they gave us a number, which was in line with what we were thinking. We also have a lot of relationships with the solar industry, and we asked them the same thing, you know, what are your construction costs right now? And, you know, those numbers are dwindling, are going down every year, but the number that they gave us is in line with what we're, with what we're providing. And then finally, there, there is a lot of research out there on the cost of solar. We relied heavily on a, a document that's put together by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. They put, they produce a document that basically tells you on a national scale what the cost of commercial, residential, and utility-scale projects are. And again, we use their numbers to, to come up with something that we thought would be realistic, not overly burdensome, but allow us to build utility-scale projects to benefit the community.
Good. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Close the public hearing, please.
Yes.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Now, is there a motion?
Mayor, Mayor Paris, may I, before we call for the question, you know, I, I know that probably there was a lot of legalese there, and sometimes there's some confusion, but I think when the mayor asked for some clarification, there's probably three people here that have really are out on the cutting edge. The mayor for coming up with the idea of moving us in the right direction, sitting in a meeting with Marvin to think in terms of how do you cooperate with the building industry and, and making the original idea of the mayor's come to fruition. And then I'm really impressed with staff coming up with the, the numbers to make it work. And I, again, I just don't think people realize that without the mayor's idea, several years back, I clearly think we're going to be the first city. We're going to make it, and this, this really makes a difference for builders.
You know, it's easy to be mayor of this city. It really is. It's an incredible staff. They're incredibly bright. They work incredibly hard, and I just take the credit.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Jim Voss and his planning commission also did a lot of work as well, too.
Yeah, let's not forget that. You're the one that got.
Yes. My apologies, Jim, for not including you in that group before, so, but really, I think we're going to find ourselves back getting those awards again, you know, leading not just California, not just the U.S., but possibly the world, so impressive.
You know, what, what you really did is you brought IBW, you brought the building industry, you brought them together for a mutual benefit where it's a win-win for everyone, and that's hard to do. You know, I know everybody knows how gentle I am and how conciliatory I am. If I didn't have you guys bringing these people together and, and getting everybody working together, none of this would happen, and I know that.
Well, I'd like, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to just say, following Councilman Mann's comments, we do have an incredible staff in this community. I can't say enough about them. They're willing to take risks. Sometimes, we, commissioners, may be a little slow on the uptake, and we ask some silly questions, but they treat us very respectfully and provide the information that we've asked for and do it in, in such a way that it makes us all look wonderful. I'm just.
Impressive.
Thank you.
This is a huge thing. I mean, we're, we're the first city to pull, pull this off. This is huge.
Yes. And then the last thing, too, I don't mean to keep butting in, but Marvin's idea about the mitigation fee, maybe it could be a revenue generation. We lead the state. I hope everybody's got a bunch of crazy people up north that are fighting with the state, and maybe we build more solar fields and make some money on it. Possibly.
Aren't we making money yet?
We do, we cover our expenses and then some, but one of the advantages of when you had the idea of starting, you know, LCE, is that the mitigation fee then provides a revenue source to build utility-scale solar, which then helps all the stakeholders, you just said. And we, and as someone's building utility-scale solar, they can sell it to any customer. It doesn't have to just be Lancaster.
Yeah.
With economy of scale, so.
Yeah.
This is really good, and virtually everyone wins. Not to be outdone, Patty made an important point. Mayor, you started with, let's keep the residents first, not builders, not everyone. I think what sometimes get lost is those bills, that someone can go from $2,000 to nothing in a year. That's huge. That's $2,000 more in the economy and the pocket to put what they, whatever, and I think that was one of the breakthroughs, was start with the people who are going to be our citizens for 20 years, not everyone else. So that was big.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution number 17-03.
I will second that.
It's unanimous. The speaker cards have to be in before the public hearing starts. If that happens, then you can speak, and you, you speak on more issues than anybody in the entire city combined, and you should know that. Okay? Thank you. PH 1, public hearing is now open, and it's continued to a future date.
Mayor and council, continuing along the lines of saving residents' money, we are here again a year later for a conversation and approval of a new rate structure for LCE. And I think this is another item that sometimes we see go by, and we'll approve it. People save money, but I think we need to understand the magnitude of what's happened. We're the first city in the state to operate a CCA standalone. And I, other than San Francisco, which is a county city, we are still the only standalone city to be operating a CCA. The rates you're approving tonight mark the first op, full operational year of the CCA, and we can honestly say we've done it effectively. We've done it with strong financials, and the citizens have not only had greener energy, they've saved money on their energy. Tonight, the rate structures are going to be proving affirms, or reaffirms, the city's ability to continue to provide this service at a more affordable rate and providing a greener and more environmentally-friendly product. Annually, SCE submits to the CPUC general rate case, which identifies what they anticipate their procurement costs are going to be. As part of that process, we follow that, you know, Kathy specifically follows that closely to identify, you know, what is, what is the, what is our competitor, so to speak, rate's going to be, so that we can assure that our rates are lower than theirs and that are greener than theirs. That process happens about January 1st, so up in that, up until that, up until January 1st, those numbers are not public. So we're, we're guessing, right? We're putting numbers in a pro forma. We're trying to understand what the market's doing. We're looking at gas prices. We're worried about rainfall. There's a lot of things that are going into these rate setting. Once January come, one comes out, we identify, we know exactly what those rates are going to be, that CPUC approved from Edison. Then we can update our pro forma, the financial analysis, to determine, can we provide that energy at a lower cost and at a more environmentally-friendly product? That's one, one thing we need to determine. Two, we need to make sure that we can cover our operational costs over that period of time as well. So today, with the rates you're approving, we're going to approve, or we're recommending to approve, a 2% discount from Edison's current rate structure on every one of our, our rate classes. So if, if you are a Lancaster Choice Energy customer, you are going to pay 2% less on your energy costs on an annual basis. Overall, and citywide, that, that amounts to $1.9 million that's being put back into the economy, into the pockets of our citizens that they can spend locally for any services that they may have. And what's important to note is nearly 50% of our residents that are on the CARE program, and that's the, it's an affordable CARE program, almost 50% of our residents are on the CARE program, will save an additional 13, or save an additional 11% on top of that 2%, as compared to SCE's domestic rate. So nearly half of your residents are saving 13% on their energy. The, in addition, the, there are slight changes in the, in the rate structure and additional rates, as one is an EV rate, a public EV rate, and we're working diligently to install public charging stations throughout the community that are paid charging stations. There is a rate associated with those charging stations, and that is set in this, in this approval tonight. And, you know, one of our, or our greatest marketing tool is to say that our, our product is cheaper and our product is greener. And again, through your approval tonight, we can continue to say that. But it's important to reiterate that when we talk about the rate structure, and I think this came out a little bit in the paper, the question's going to be, is it going up or is it going down as compared to last year? Well, based on the cost of energy, the delivery of energy, and the fact that we're mirroring Edison's energy, some rates are going to go up, some rates are going to go down. But at the end of the day, from a comparison standpoint, LCE's customers or City of Lancaster's customers are going to have a 2% discount on their energy. As part of the approval, too, you're making the commitment to put 1% of the revenue associated with LCE into a rate stability fund, which will help us build up and protect customers from rate fluctuations, as well as paying back the general fund on some of the subsidies that were kind of fronted to begin this program. So this is a very good news story, and we're excited to tell it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
When do we hit breakeven?
Breakeven? We are, we are, we have, we have always been breakeven. Literally on day one, it's a profitable venture. Literally, on day one, it's a profitable venture.
Really?
Yes. I mean, the reality is, we're buying energy at one price. We have an operational cost that's added to that, and we're selling it at another price. And, you know, as long as we are, have customers buying that energy, there is a margin there. And we keep our operational costs tight.
Including startup costs.
Well, startup costs are being repaid now. That's what, as I mentioned before, is the general fund is beginning to be being repaid for this venture. And, you know, that was, I think, close to about $1.8 million, so.
Well, I get that it's beginning to be repaid. When does it get repaid? When do we hit breakeven?
Well, when we look at the budget, we're going to identify where that, that's a budget process. So July 1, we're going to be looking at what that payback is going to be. It could be next year. We could break it up into two years. We could break it up into three. That's going to be a function of cash flow and how much reserve you want in the bank, right? Because there's a strategy that, as Edison's rates fluctuate, you know, they could be in a position, market dynamics such that we have to pay a little more than Edison for our energy costs, for whatever reason.
Is the answer three years?
What's that?
Three years at the end.
Yes, it will absolutely be paid within three years.
Okay, that's good. That's great. Is, are the people of Lancaster paying less for electricity than those in surrounding cities?
Yes.
Appreciably more, less?
Well, collectively, $1.9 million less.
That's even better. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Maria Lozano.
Okay, well, I'm not feeling too good right now, so. It's great. Go back over some of these things that I had to, I guess I could speak on them now since it's, boy. The awarded design build team services, who's the design build team service? For some reason, I think of that as the architectural design. If it is, I'd like to know if that's what that is. Because I remember the TOD services. I, because I have a lot of problems with that as far as under the fraud situation goes. And the ZNE, energy, I don't know if that's because of zoning ordinances, too, or what, which could be revenue-making money deal. Also, where she was speaking, that whole, you know, and how much this and how much that, I don't know how anybody could keep up with that. Although I do know what it was talking about, with one residence pays this much and another pays that much, because I know over at our houses, one person next door was paying $100 in gas and electric while we were paying $700 a month at ours. And of course, it came up and shouldn't say anything other than investors weren't going to like it or whatever was being said. And the CARE, the CARE deal, that costs twice as much. That's no low-income deal, okay? That costs, if you have CARE, you're paying twice as much, okay? Trust me. Look over, you want to look over the numbers and stuff at that, you're paying twice as much on that, okay? And what else? Oh, unless, of course, you're in a group, a group of certain people, then you don't have to pay as much or whatever on your gas or electric bills. Then there's Prop 66. Anybody wants to look at that and figure out why our gas bills or gas so high. I think a lot of people need to be recompensated for all this that's happened, all these high-energy bills they've been paying all these years while other people are paying practically nothing, you know? And that's how we lose our houses. That's how we lose our, you know, because, you know, we can't afford to pay for anything or we're sick or, you know, things like that, which is real fun to go through all the time. I think it should be an investigation, too, as far as DOJ, Department of Health and Security, Department of Education, Department of Culture, Department of Finance, Department of Ways and Measures. I think all should be investigated because it's all fraud, okay? And it's all stuff that's making us sick, making us pay more so that other people don't have to pay anything.
Thank you.
I'll move we adopt resolution 17-06, amending resolution 16-11.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous, approved.
She has to go after him.
Yeah, that's going to happen. Shannon McDonald. Oh, I got to do the thing, do it. Oh, I'm jumping ahead. CA1, council agenda. I want everybody who wants to be appointed, reappointed to a commission or JPAs, I'd like an email from you with your first and second choice. I'm going to start mixing things up and reappointing people at the next meeting. That's the council agenda.
That was on CA2?
What?
That was CA2, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
CA1's off.
Where do they send the email to, to the city?
Just send me, send it to the city email account. Okay. Okay. City manager?
Yes, thank you, sir. Three things. Number one, the city is blessed with a good staff, good leadership on the council. Some things are more visible than others. For example, this weekend when we all, the rainstorms, and most of the folks were in their house on Sunday watching football. There were city crews out making sure the roads are safe, making sure that flood areas were properly mitigated, that they closed streets on a dime and be adaptable. And that should not go unnoticed. They're out there keeping safe. And then when weather freezes and there's water on the road, they're out there early, like this morning, icing down around schools and such where there's water. And that's important. One message I'd like to give the public are there are some people, more than we need, that drive like idiots when it rains and when there's ice. And they're put, that's the truth, and you all have seen it. And they put themselves, but all of our families, in danger. So they put the police in danger. They put our city crews in danger when they have to close roads. So it's the public's responsibility to drive a little bit better as well, too, and keep us all safe. We have two videos to show you. The first one is on our MLK Day of Service. We had a really good weekend. We had the Day of Service, which was phenomenal, over 1,000 volunteers. I had the honor of attending an event at UAV that was put on by Jesse Smith, which was a leadership academy that was really, really well-done with kids. But the one we're going to focus is Justice Sunday. I've been to five of them. I think this was the best. And one of the reasons it was the best is that it involved the Antelope Valley Education Alliance, which is out of AV High School, which works with kids to keep them in school and productive. It was led by Nigel Hawley, John Keith, and Mr. Durico's son, Ryan Durico. And they put on a program that looked at American history, African-American, American history through their eyes, and it was an incredibly compelling performance. So there's some people commenting on that performance.
When I think about Dr. Martin Luther King, when I think about the hundreds and hundreds of people who died fighting for the opportunity to look for justice, and that's what this program is about today.
What we're hoping people walk away with is a new outlook on African-American history as a whole. And just how it ties into the American story as a whole, and how there's a synergy between both. I'm hoping everyone enjoys theirselves, and I'm really excited to see the kids do what they're going to do today.
The Lancaster station, Pombo Station, is going to, we're going to come here just to show our support and our involvement for this event and what this event means to the people of Lancaster and Antelope Valley.
Beyond our ethnicities, beyond gender, we are Americans, and this is our country. And justice belongs to every single one of us.
It's been an outstanding event this year. I think this is the fifth or sixth year I've attended, and actually, this certainly has to rank up with the best. The youth has been mentioned during this program a couple of times as our future, and it's important for them to keep history in mind. Lancaster has led the way, I believe, in community reconciliation and getting along, and I'm proud to be associated with it.
Really good program. That was good work.
No, no, I meant the video. I mean, the program, too, but.
I'm sorry.
It's good work.
That was, that was your chaplain. Allison's giving me the death stare right now, I'm sure. The second one, I think Vern, we did the Lance Camper sort of announcement yesterday, it was. I think Vern made a very good point. There's a project right now that's going on throughout the state, that the state has these cute little code names. It's called Project Yellow Shoes. And all these communities submit, and they say what they're going to do, and it's about 150 jobs. We have a company in Lancaster that's been here 20 years that has been extremely successful, and they're adding 150 jobs. And it shows the value of long-term relationships, establishing a community that's friendly to business, having a very business-friendly council. And it shows that you can grow your own businesses, and if you put in environment, the ingenuity and the creativity of your own businesses will create those jobs as well, too. This is one example in our business spotlight.
In 2017, Lance Camper is celebrating its 20th year here in the city of Lancaster. The company already employs more than 500 employees, but they're adding 61,000 square feet up the street, and that's going to be an additional 150 employees.
Lance Camper started in the San Fernando Valley in 1965. I started with the company in 1966. We moved to the AV from Pacoima in the late '80s. We were running out of space. We had, we were operating out of a 30,000-foot building, but we had six other locations in the valley. We looked up in Oxnard, we looked out in Riverside, and we looked out in the Antelope Valley. And really, the Antelope Valley was our hands-down choice of all the other locations.
Tell me about the new building. What from here is going to go to the new building?
We currently have 510 people that work at Lance. Our sales have increased so quickly in 2016 that we just couldn't afford to wait to address our backlog of orders for a year and a half or two years while we were building a new facility. The plan today is to move all of our CNC and laminating, a part of our business, into that building. We're producing 14 units a day here right now, and our goal is to get to 20. The support that the city gave us was just unbelievable.
Thank you. Now, city clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager.
Thank you. Shannon McDonald.
Good evening, city council members, mayor, vice mayor. I came here because I usually don't speak too much unless I feel compelled to do so. I felt compelled to do so, once again, because I keep hearing certain individuals. It's happened for probably the last three weeks to a month that I've seen that someone's come up here and talked about how you're being unjust to the precious Bloods and Crips out here. I've been out here, and I watched what happened with the skinheads and with the Mongols and with the, you know, MS-13s. I am here to say that if you've got, if any individual's gotten theirself together out here, good kudos to you. But don't expect somebody like me to give you any kind of extra praise. I mean, I didn't bring my children out here. My family didn't come out here to have to sit up and concern myself with gangs or my children. And I am 100% back behind you, Mayor Rex Paris, because that's something I don't play. We, a lot of, some people don't even realize that we actually have people that go out and clean up the graffiti out here. And that's why people don't see graffiti like that out here, because our city, my city, excuse me, doesn't play that. Everything's mine. My city council, my residents, my school district, everything. And I'm just, I'm a little touched, I'm a little sensitive to that thing, because I feel like I'm raising my children a certain way. My parents, my grandparents raised me a certain way, and it's your choice if you want to be in a gang. If you get caught up that, I just don't see how anybody can come up here and back up any gangs at all, to say, you're picking on this one, you're picking on that one. If you're a gang, go take that stuff somewhere else. That's the way I see it. I came up here to give you kudos, council, because it really irritates me. I'm always, I'm always going to be on the law enforcement end more than anything. I'm never going to, I mean, I have, I have friends that I don't associate really too much with that have lived that lifestyle. But if that's not the lifestyle I'm trying to live, then I'm not going to be around those people. And I'm not going to come up here and give props to any gangs or any gang members, black, white, Mexican. I really don't care. I'm just not going to give any props to anybody. And I hope that our law enforcement, our sheriff's deputies, fire department, and everybody else cracks down on all of them, because that's not something I want my children to have to deal with. I want them to be able to walk the streets safe. I don't want them to have to worry about gunfire. If you don't want to get caught up in the city of Lancaster, don't commit the crime. That's all I really needed to say. I just wanted to make sure that you guys know, I got your back like always, okay? And I'm not going to let anybody come up here and do that. Understand? I told you I don't play, didn't I? Better find me a job out here.
I am, I am touched. Thank you. David Paul.
Mayor, vice mayor, council, good evening. I got to tell you, it's a pleasure to come here as usual. The world's a little crazy right now, but our city works, and that makes me feel better, and it makes me feel good to be part of it. I just had a couple of comments. I went to Justice Sunday. It was a very good program. I really enjoyed watching the kids put that show on. And the other thing I just wanted to tell you about going the extra mile, I was sitting in the stoplight at 20th and Allen. I saw a city worker trying to make a right turn, and while they were stopped, they're waiting for the light to change, they noticed some old garage sale signs laying on the ground. Guy got out of his truck, picked that stuff up. And you just don't see people go out of the way like that. He just did the right thing. And that made me feel good. And so, across the board, this is a great city, and I love living here, and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Evans.
My name is Michael Evans. I represent the 10,000 Fearless Movement here in the Antelope Valley. In October, the mayor of Lancaster, Rex Paris, issued $1,000 bounty for a felony conviction of gang bangers. In December, the mayor stated, and I quote, "If I could do a $1,000 bounty for Crips and Bloods who commit felonies in this town and make it dead or alive, I would, I would." So I told you at the last council meeting that you can't. And even if you could, we wouldn't allow you to. The 10,000 Fearless Movement in the Antelope Valley wouldn't allow you to, and the concerned citizens of Lancaster wouldn't allow you to. We're not going to allow you or anyone, Blood, Crip, mayor, district attorney, or anybody else, target our black and brown youth. And you know who else won't allow you to? The Department of Justice won't allow you to. You see, I read the settlement agreement between the DOJ and the Sheriff's Department dated April 28, 2015. And I would argue that your little $1,000 bounty for Bloods and Crips, which you could do, would do dead or alive if you could, actually encourages the Sheriff's Department to violate paragraphs 43, 50, and 64 of the settlement agreement. So I contacted the monitors of the settlement agreement, Dr. Angie Wolf and Joseph Brand of the National Council on Crime and Delinquency, as I'm sure that they'll be eager to hear how you're supporting the settlement agreement. So I request you again to rescind your $1,000 bounty. And the last time I was here, you made some comments about bounties issued by gangs for attacks on sheriffs, and that you'll rescind your bounty when they rescind theirs. Are we six years old saying, I'll take back what I said if you take back what you said first? I have no control over what bounties are issued by gangs. And let me make it crystal clear that neither I nor the 10,000 Fearless Movement in the Antelope Valley support any bounties issued by anyone, Bloods, Crips, or mayor. But I can tell you this, we are not going away. We will be a thorn in your side until you publicly rescind your $1,000 bounty. And for the other council members who haven't said a word to renounce the mayor's $1,000 bounty, we hear your silence, and your silence is unacceptable. Either you voice your disagreement with this bounty, or your silence tells us, the community, that you agree with it. Your silence condones the mayor's behavior, and like the mayor, we will also hold you accountable. Mayor Rex Paris told the LA Times, "If I could have gotten a meeting with President Bush..." Mayor Rex Paris told the LA Times,[597.36][597.67]"If I could have gotten a meeting with President Bush to get this guy prosecuted, I would have." You were referring to Raymond Lee Jennings, the black man who was wrongly convicted of a murder in 2005. You have proven that you have poor judgment. You had poor judgment in 2005 that led to an innocent man being wrongly prosecuted and convicted and you continue to show poor judgment with this $1,000 bounty and your poor judgment continues to affect the livelihood of black men.
Wow. All this time and I didn't know Jennings was black. Mr. Jennings is white.
Yeah. Allison, is this a city policy?
No.
So that's the difference between the, what he referred to earlier as far as the settlement agreement?
Mayor Paris's policy has no bearing on this agreement with the Department of Justice.
Okay. And Mr. Evans, let me stand up and make it perfectly clear. I stand with the mayor. So you have no qualms. I stand with them. We are against gang members, whether they're skinheads, whether they're white, brown, black. It is against that type of lifestyle and we'll do everything that we can to eliminate it. And I stand with the mayor on it. And so make no qualms about your little group and that we're not afraid of standing up with it. And there's a whole bunch of other people out there that agree with what the City Council is doing.
I'm not even gonna respond. Fran, come on down.
I too stand with you on this. And if you need me, oh, I got my stick over there. I use that, too. But I stand with what you say with the gangs. God bless you. I use this. Thank you very much for listening to me. I have a couple of little things and I guess, I don't know if I should speak to Jeff about this, but I'm concerned about handicap parking on the Boulevard. There isn't any on the main street on Lancaster Boulevard, no handicap parking. And I've gotten a few people that have come to me and said, "How come we don't have streets, curbside parking for handicaps?" And the second...
Most streets don't have curbside because all the businesses have the handicap behind them is where the handicap requirement is for them to have that.
Because of the ADA code.
But the thing that, okay, I understand that part because I've already done that, but some of our handicap people can't park in the back and get to the front because, can't we make a little adjustment there for some of our people here in Lancaster, Mr. Mayor?
That's a good point, Fran. Look into it, would you?
We will.
And see how best to accommodate it.
We will.
And, yeah, I mean, be creative, but yeah, all right?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Let's see, I won't do the others right now. I did want to mention, the bullet train, you're having the meeting tomorrow here, right? From 3:00 to 6:00?
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
The high-speed rail authority is using our council chambers to inform the public and gather opinion.
In light of the change of the president, are, are they really trying to force that off on us still?
Yeah, and that's only from Burbank to Palmdale. It's not even...
I think the Secretary of Transportation pulled the funding today, the federal funding.
Yeah, their, their timing was less than optimal, so yes, they're... They will be here tomorrow from 3:00 to 6:00, I'm assuming.
Fran, I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's, oh shoot. Real quick, voting, I wanted to get your opinion, we've talked about it before, on the quarter percent the county wants to put on the ballot because there is gonna be a special ballot day. It's gonna be a Saturday and Sunday, March the 4th and 5th at the library. Those are for early voters. The rest of everybody else will vote on March the 7th, the bullet trains. I got first, 30 seconds. I want to say, my birthday's Friday, I'll be 74 and I'm happy about it and I'm a great-grandmother with two great-grandchildren. And I thank you very much, all of you. And thank you for listening to me.
Isla Johnson?
Council, thank you for seeing me today. My name is Isla Johnson. I'm a political science student at Antelope Valley College and I've been a resident of Lancaster, California for the past five years. I've always lived on Gadsden Avenue here and there's an intersection along that road that crosses Gadsden Avenue with Avenue K4. That intersection only has stop signs along K4. And in the five years that I've lived in that area, I've seen numerous accidents at that particular intersection. It's a heavily trafficked intersection, especially with children coming home from school. So I would like to ask Council to look into the traffic reports for that area and consider making that intersection a four-way stop instead of a two-way.
How close to Eyleed is that?
I'm sorry?
How close to Eyleed?
Sorry about that. How close to Eyleed, the school?
I don't understand.
Eyleed is, is west.
The other side, all right. All right. Well, look at it, would you?
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. While you're looking at it, look at Eyleed also.
Yes, sir.
You know, the, the, the way they have the kids crossing there is disturbing. All right? Good. Lisa Salon, Celine, Celine? Did I get it right? How are you?
I'm fine, great.
I'm great, thank you.
Hi, Council and Mayor. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. There's an agenda item that's been removed from tonight. It's gonna be postponed to a future date. It deals with medical cannabis regulation in the city of Lancaster. I am a medical cannabis lawyer. I represent numerous businesses in Los Angeles and Southern California and Northern California. And I just wanted to kind of open the dialogue a little more with the Council. I know your planning commission has put forth a ordinance. It is a medical cannabis ordinance. It is not for adult use or for recreational. It does not even allow dispensaries. It is for cannabis cultivation and potentially manufacturing. Your city voted 54% at the last election for adult use. We're not even talking about adult use, we're talking about medical. And under the new state laws, the cities have the ability to regulate and the state of California, as of January 1st, 2018, will have statewide laws that will help the cities not only have local ordinances and licensing, but state licensing. There currently are 28 states plus the District of Columbia that has medical cannabis and eight that have adult use. Tom Lackey, your local Antelope Valley Assembly member, was one of the proponents and authors of the statewide regulations. So he is a law enforcement background and he also is currently has a, it's AV6, which is about drug driving. He is really a proponent of trying to make sure that if people are using cannabis, that they don't drive under the influence, which is definitely a problem. There are some issues right now with the new administration. People are worried about whether or not there's going to be a restriction on the medical cannabis states. And this DOJ has been defunded. The DOJ also has been told by the district courts that they will not be able to go after businesses that are being, you know, are prepared to comply with all the state laws and with the local laws. So I really believe that at this point, the dialogue must be open. There are a lot of job opportunities that can come into the, into the communities and they are definitely highly regulated monetized business if they're done correctly. If you don't regulate, you will have the black market, which is something that is much more detrimental to your cities than having a regulated industry, which can be very beneficial to your community. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
I have some questions.
Sure.
The, you know, the opposition is, and I'm not sure where I'm at on this. The opposition is faith-based and, but at the same time, they have some serious concerns that I think are worth looking at that go beyond any biblical preemption. If there is a biblical preemption, I'm not even sure about that. One of the concerns is if we approve this for medical usage, how do we know that it's not going to be distributed to the general population?
Well, first of all, when you're doing cannabis cultivation or manufacturing in industrial buildings, the building looks no different than any other industrial building you would have. There is no retail traffic allowed in or out. It is a completely locked-down facility with security guards 24/7. Everybody that accesses in and out of the building must be a member of that particular business in order to go in and out. So there will be no retail dispensing at all. That will be completely regulated, especially in 2018, when all the product that comes out of there must go out for testing and for distribution. So there's no way it can hit the streets. Every single plant inside a cannabis cultivation facility will have a RFID tag on it, every single plant. The state of Colorado uses a program called METRIC. That's one of the programs that the state of California is currently looking at. And what's wonderful about that program is they will know where every single plant is from seed to sale. Any plant that leaves will be, will miss, will be missing and there will be regulatory reaction to that. So the reason why this is the time for cities and states, and there are over 28 cities and states, cities throughout the state of California that are currently looking into manufacturing and cultivation. And I have been asked by numerous cities to go and talk to council, talk to planning commissions and to educate them because the businesses that come in can provide a lot of jobs.
Wait a minute, yeah. I need you to stay with the question.
Okay.
Say we grow, how do you, a, a pound of marijuana
Right.
in one of these facilities. How do we know that it's only going to be used for medical purposes as opposed to recreational purposes? That the, the end user is purchasing it under the, the laws regarding medical marijuana?
Okay, well, currently, there is no recreational use allowed in the state of California until January 1st, 2018. So by the time any project would probably be up and running in your city, we're gonna be pretty close to that date based on having to build things out. Having said that, the way Colorado did it is every plant that was tagged actually had a medical tag on it. So it could not be diverted for recreational use. And you all could actually issue a license for medical only. So all of that would then have to go directly to a medically licensed dispensary or would be going to a manufacturer that would be making a medical product. There could be no diversion because they would be able to do through track and trace, they would know where every plant is at every moment. So you can't, you can't buck the system, so to say. The system is very well in place and Colorado is a great model, which I know the state of California is looking into a lot of their protocols. So it really prevents the diversion. And diversion is the big issue. You wanna, you wanna have a very stringent policy. So we would absolutely request, if that were to become the law in the city of Lancaster, that the city before the state even requires a track and trace, that they require track and trace here. So you would know where every plant is at all times. Law enforcement would able, also be able to know where it is because these programs are computerized. So you can come in with readers and know where all the plants are at any given time. There are a lot of ways to prevent theft and diversion.
Okay, so, so say it is diverted. Under the ordinance that we're proposing or has been proposed, would we be able to yank the license?
Absolutely. And once you yank the license, the state yanks the license. So it goes hand in hand. So in order for anybody to have the business in a city, the more rigorous your business regulations are, which we would, hope you would have, they would be able to, you'd see the good players versus the bad players. And then once, I mean, and these people are working very hard to get licensing. These are businesses that have been around for a very long time. They're looking for cities to regulate them. They don't want the black market. They want a regulated market. It actually levels the playing field. Everybody is taxed, everybody has labor agreement. You would need to have a labor union agreement in order to have these businesses. You have living wages. It provides very good jobs for a lot of people. And most of the people I represent are excellent community members. They get very involved in their chambers.
That's, that really isn't the issue. The issue seems to be, you know, people are, are almost violently opposed to us providing recreational use marijuana. And I, I respect that, I understand that. In fact, I'm not sure I don't disagree with it. I mean, regardless of how the voters voted. But they also recognize that there is, seems to be a legitimate medical purpose here. So what you're, are, are you satisfied that we can absolutely know if it's being diverted for recreational use?
Is that to me or to both answer?
Both of you.
I think based on the ordinance and laws, I'm not an expert, but in speaking to some experts, I am satisfied that there is a process in place that we would get the businesses to follow. But I agree with the speaker that it really is starting with the right partners. If you have the right partners and you vet them, they also want a legitimate business.
Correct me where I'm wrong. In 2018, it becomes legal recreational?
And also medical. There's both.
Okay.
You're not doing away with medical.
I, I understand that, but the, and the difference at that point is how it's taxed.
Well, it's both how it's licensed and how it's taxed.
Okay.
So can I give you a quick example of what happened in Colorado?
Well, I'm not, that's not what I'm, I'm concerned with.
Okay, okay.
I'm saying if, let's say I'm a medical, I have a medical permit now or use now. And in 2018, it becomes recreational?
No. No. It has to be licensed by your city to be recreational. There is nothing in the AMA, which is the Adult Use Medical Act, that makes a city license both. You have the right as a city to only license medical?
I, I'm, I'm talking about obtaining it.
Obtaining it as an individual?
As an individual. So when I go to obtain it as an individual, in 2018, I no longer need a medical marijuana card. I could go get it without that.
Correct.
Okay. So to obtain that card, I have to pay a physician, correct?
Right.
That physician gives me a card and I pay for that card, it lasts a year?
Correct.
Okay. To get the same rights that an individual has in 2018 without the card?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, can I, can I give you an example of what's going on in Los Angeles?
Please, go ahead.
They have an ordinance that's going to be on the ballot, made, March the 7th. And they are going to be, they will have dispensaries and cultivation and everything there. You're not even having a dispensary here. So no one in the city of Lancaster can basically get product from any of these cultivators or manufacturers because they're not a dispensary. There's no retail availability to a recreational or a medical patient in Lancaster. They would have to go to a dispensary. So in Los Angeles, what they just did is they put an ordinance on. The gross receipts tax for medical will be 5% and for recreational will be 10. And the sales tax by the state of California falls off if you're a medical patient, but there's a 15% excise tax. So what's gonna happen in January of 2018? So what's going to happen in January of 2018 is if you are a patient, you will be able to pay 20% above the actual price. So if it's $100, it'd be 120, but if you are recreational, it's 134. So the problem with the thought process that you're going through is if you really would want to have recreational, it's going to be a very expensive thing. They're going to be taxing it at 34% in the city of Los Angeles. And we're finding most of the cities that we have talked to are doing exactly the same thing. They're trying to dissuade the recreational user. And they're trying to make it more for the random tourist that comes, you know, the tourist, which is basically what happened in Colorado. Colorado has more medical businesses than they have, licenses than they have recreational. And they passed their law in November of 2012 for the same reason. Because people felt that it was really not worth the extra money. So I think it would keep it more medical.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So did people with the medical cards in Colorado continue to use medical cards?
Yes, yes. And in the state of California, they're actually requiring you to go through county health department to be able to avoid having to pay the 9% sales tax. So they're really going to be able to see the quantity of patients they have in the state. They say that 19 out of every thousand people in the ci, in the state of California are patients.
Say that again?
19 out of every thousand people in the state of California are medical marijuana patients.
Thank you. So if we do nothing, what happens next year?
If you do nothing, then, well, first of all, you need to either have something on the books or you, you know, or you have to either ban or regulate. The problem with banning, we find, is there still is a lot of illegal activity going on in cities like yours. And you're not getting any benefit from it. You're not getting any tax revenue. You don't even know if they're paying people living wages. You don't know what's going on under the roofs of different buildings. We have found that when you have strict regulations and daily fines for bad businesses, that it really dissuades them. Um, in this Los Angeles ordinance, it's $20,000 a day fine, and it's cumulative. So every day you are open and operating an illegal business in Los Angeles, if this measure passes, which they're saying it will, it will be $600,000 a month in fines that you would have to pay to have an illegal business. That's pretty hefty. So I, I'm all about regulating, enforcing, and monetizing. Create jobs for your business, for your city, create tax revenue for your city, and regulate it so you get rid of the bad people. The bad people don't want to be in a city where it's regulated because then they, they can be, you know, shut down, and then they have huge fines. But we are all about medical.
Okay. So who's going to be tracking, whether it's medical or recreational?
Well, if you as a city only want medical, then when people apply to the state for a license, they can only get what they have from the local government. So they couldn't go to the state of California and get anything more than they have here.
So a dispensary that's selling just medical could buy from our growers, where the growers were regulated?
Correct.
But a recreational dispensary couldn't buy from them?
Correct.
And if they did, we would know it?
Yes, and actually, as of 2018, everything's going to be leaving the cultivation and the manufacturing, if you do manufacturing, and it will go to a distribution center like an alcohol beer distribution center. Everything will be tested, it will be pesticide-free, there won't be any additives or anything that wouldn't be something that would be medicine. And then they will be the ones that will be distributing the product to the dispensaries. So it really never gets taken off premises and brought somewhere else unless it's by a legal transporter, which there is a transportation license that the state has created.
What? It's a tough, it's a tough call, give me a break. All right. What were the other concerns? Do you remember? Do you remember?
Sure, can you talk about it being federally? Is it legal federally?
No.
And, uh, open bank accounts? Can they open a bank account? And is it primarily a?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we call that a compound question, one question at a time.
So, let's start with the first one. No, it is not federally legal. It is a Schedule I drug. However, with 28 states plus the District of Columbia and eight recreational states, some, they're, they're overlapping, obviously, there has been a relaxation and a defunding of the DOJ. And basically, what has happened is this, the Department of-
Can you, can you back up a minute?
Sure.
And when you're saying there's been a defunding of the DOJ?
Yes.
We haven't seen that.
Okay, so what hap, there's three thing, okay. So there's three things, so there's three, there's three things that have happened. In August of 2013, the Department of Justice created something called the Cole Memo, which I don't know if you've ever heard of the Cole Memo or not. But the Cole Memo really said, if you're a state with robust laws regulating medical marijuana in your state, and you are preventing diversion, and diversion is two ways. It's going to youth, it's going out of state, it's going to gangs and cartels. And you are really trying to keep this purely medical and not trying to attract children and not trying to attack them, then we will honor you because we feel that you as a state can regulate this. In December of 2015, the Department of Justice was defunded by Congress on going after states that have robust medical marijuana laws. So again, everything was medical marijuana, medical marijuana, or medical cannabis. And therefore, under the last administration, they had defunded that. In August of 2016, the Ninth District, the Ninth Circuit Court in San Francisco said to the DOJ, they were going after 10 businesses that were actually all licensed and regulated in, by their states. And they said, "We're throwing the case out because you're going after businesses that have licenses and are obeying to their state and their local laws. Therefore, we're not going to allow you to come in and take up our court's times doing this." So all three of these are pointing in the direction that the states are trying very hard to create regulations. They've listened to their voters. The, you know, the different states have different types of laws. Some only allow CBD, which is the non-psychoactive, some have CBD and THC laws. They're all different, but at the end of the day, we have not seen federal intervention in this industry in the last three or four years.
And we, we do have a new, or proposed new Attorney General.
Right.
During his confirmation hearing, he was asked about this specific situation. And he said, "We will enforce the law, and we will start in California." Can you address that?
I'd never heard him say he'd start in California. Um, what I, what I heard him say is that he was going to look at what the states were doing, and he would look and see if there, I mean, it really was, he was very wishy-washy, if you listen to him. I would be a little surprised if he came after California. I mean, we are the largest economy in the United States. We have 39 million people here, and our people were the first ones in 1996 to pass the Compassionate Use Act. I don't think that California's going to do very well having the federal government come in and tell them what to do when they're in the process of passing a seed-to-sale, soup-to-nuts type of a law that's going to control every single aspect of cannabis. And I think that, as, as he talked about it, he didn't want to make a commitment yes or a commitment no, but I don't think it's going to go over very well. And I, I agree with you, I think everybody's a little nervous about what's going on right now. But I think that we have to have faith in the fact that there are 29 different parts of the United States that have these laws, which is far, more than half of us. And I can't see the federal government irrespective of the fact that it's Schedule I, continuing on this rampage that it's, has no medicinal use because there's been more and more, you know, research and, you know, whatever it is to prove that there is a tremendous amount of medical benefit. And there's DVDs and videos from Sanjay Gupta up to all these different CNN programs showing children with epilepsy and autism and adults with all kinds of different, you know, PTSD. I mean, there's so many reasons why people are using cannabis, and it's not-
I, I understand all that. I'm just, I'm more concerned with the way that they're going with the state of California. They just took $3.5 billion from our rail system today.
Praise God, oh, excuse me, I got carried away.
And if they're going to take the money out of the rail system, why are they going to put it into going after cannabis? That's, I just don't see the, I mean, they're, they're defunding everything. They're defunding the EPA, they're defunding everything, so.
Wait a minute, I, I want to keep it factual.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't want any alternative facts.
Okay, okay. Or fiction, right?
That was good. The, uh, there is a concern of, about the banking situation. How, how are the transactions, the money transactions going to be handled?
Well, you are actually, because you don't have retail sales going on, you're not going to be dealing with the cash the way that a dispensary?
No, 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 how do, how do these, these companies that are growing this, how do they deal without a banking system?
Well-
Well, I don't, I don't know that cash isn't acceptable. I mean, quite frankly, I, I think we'd all be better off if we just worked off of cash instead of letting the banks do what they do to us.
Okay, okay, okay.
Accept your bank.
Well, I'm, I'm part of the cannabis banking working group that Treasurer Chang is working on right now at the state. There's going to be a meeting in Los Angeles on February the 10th, and he hasn't said where it's going to be yet, so I will definitely let somebody from here know, so maybe you can send some representatives. The state is desperately looking for the alternatives, but for the type of revenue that the city would be garnering from something like this, there are management accounts that a lot of these businesses have. And if they, like the city of Los Angeles now is going to allow a monthly payment of gross receipts tax instead of an annual gross receipts tax, which will definitely help these businesses and the cities get money coming in on a monthly basis. And they can be done through ACHs because if you take the, for the city purposes, if you take the revenue and you're able to keep it into the smaller increments, then it's easier for them to have banking.
Okay.
But it is definitely being worked on. I mean, Fiona Ma is very involved in this. We have Jan Owens from Business and Oversight involved in this. I mean, the entire industry has requested the state to come forward with something, and it is something that is being worked on on a daily basis.
One of the things that was raised, that, quite frankly, the only thing that was raised that caused me to pause was the concern, and, and I'll just say it, we really are building a Christian city here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's what we're doing. And the, the implication was that if I were to vote for this, that would be contrary to that goal. I don't think that that's necessarily true, but it has caused me concern. And when we bring this up in two weeks, I'd really like people to address that issue. Is there a, a incongruency between Christian values and medical use of marijuana? Because I can't see one. But some pastors I, I really respect seem to think there is one. No one has been able to articulate it yet, but I would like that issue addressed. Because if we're going to, I'm not going to run from it. I mean, that's what we're here, that's why that's behind us. So let's have the discussion, but let's have a public discussion about it. The, the other, you know, the thing that really caused me a lot of concern was, six weeks ago I had brain surgery, or five weeks ago I had brain surgery. And while I was in the hospital getting pain medication, you know, with that, you know, that thing you push every time you want some morphine? I was working two hours later. And, you know, I was careful of what I was working on, but nonetheless, I was working two hours later. Two days later, when I went home, I had an ice bag on my bed, on my head for the next week, and couldn't do anything because there wasn't adequate pain medication. And I mean, it was horrible, it really was, I, I, it was horrible. And it occurred to me, I know who I am, and I know what, what my bank account looks like, and if I'm in that kind of pain, what happens to folks who don't have insurance? What happens to folks who can't get in to see a doctor? You know, but, I mean, there is no pain medication that's available, that, that is, because the pills they gave me just weren't working. And I'm thinking of all the people who have cancer and all the people who are in tractable pain and have no relief. And I don't know how to balance my Christian values with denying them that or lining up on a side that denies them that. And so in two weeks, let's have a discussion, and hopefully we'll all do the right thing.
Could I make one comment to your pain and your, what you discussed just now?
Sorry, what?
Um, we had, we, I wanted to just react to what you just said about having pain. It was interesting because today we had someone at our office who actually has, he's in his early 40s. He has survived testicular and thyroid cancer. And when he had his pain, he first started with Darvocet, then Percocet, then they put him on Vicodins and Oxycontin and all different kinds of things. And he said each time they kept increasing, increasing to the point where he felt himself getting addicted. And he said, "I need to find something different." So he actually started using cannabis several years ago for this. A completely functioning man now, he's pain-free now. But at the time, he said, the biggest problem was is that every pain medication his doctors gave him actually made him non-functional and totally loopy, he couldn't do anything. And he found cannabis to be something that helped him. You could probably load up this room with as many people that will give you that story as the many people that will give you the opposite story. But at the end of the day, what I've seen in the almost 10 years that I've been involved in this industry is there are many people that have had very positive experiences. They've had a lot of children with intractable epilepsy where they have literally 300, 400 seizures a day, going down to maybe one or two seizures a day, or one or two seizures a week, from a CBD, which is non-psychoactive, so.
Okay, but Lisa, the, the National Academy of Sciences just came out two weeks ago with a, an in-depth report on it, and clearly, it is irrefutable that this has medicinal value.
Right.
It certainly is, is a, a pain medication that works. It's a pain medication that has fewer side effects than, than that morphine machine.
Right.
But nonetheless, it has side effects. But the report also said that using it recreationally can lead to schizophrenia, especially juvenile onset. It, uh, there's a lot of downside to it, and what I want is a balanced point of view. I like the idea that, that I was probably going to vote against it, but the tracking of this to make certain that it can only be used for medicinal is, is, is something we all have to consider.
And also the fact that you're not doing any retail.
I'm sorry, what?
You're not having any retail sales. You're not going to have anybody walking in and purchasing anything or buying it in your city. It actually is going to leave your city, and it's going to go somewhere else because it has to be dispensed at a dispensary. It cannot just go out the door somewhere. So that's one of the other things. It's kind of like when you manufacture, you know, plastics in the city of Lancaster. It's not only used in the city of Lancaster, it's probably not even used in the city Lancaster. It probably goes out to all the different factories throughout the state or the country, whatever. So the product that is going to be made here will not be staying here, it'll be leaving here. And it's just going to be another factory building. It could be a Sherwin-Williams paint store, or it could be a store that's making, Lance, who's making the big, you know?
It's, it's coming down to Christians against non-Christians on this. And this is a Christian council. And my, the city attorney is over there just pulling her hair out, and I get that. The, so, you know, I, I get that. And I get that, yeah, okay, the voters voted for it. It's just like a paint store, you know? And, and fact- for it. It's just like a paint store, you know? And in fact, it's more like a paint store than we know because kids breathe paint.
[laughing]
But what I, what I'm interested in hearing is just what are the medicinal values?
Mm-hmm.
What's the downside? And I'm less concerned about the fact that Christian voters may not like it than I'm concerned with are there any real Christian principles at stake here? And I'm using you to announce to the world that that's the parameters of the discussion two weeks from now.
Okay.
Because as I sit here now, no one has shown me that. But I'm open to it. I'm open to it. And I want to remind everybody, when I said we're growing a Christian city, I meant that in the sense that we love each other. Not that we are rigidly prohibitive of everything that we're not used to. And if this is the only way for sick people to, to find relief, and so far, I haven't seen any other way unless you have money, right? Then I'm for it. So you're gonna have to convince me that I'm not, but there's other voters here. And they'll decide whatever they decide. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, could we have you next week?
Yeah.
Thank you. Claudia Colville?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Colville. I'm a student--
I got it all wrong, didn't I?
I'm a student in, at Anhele Violet College. I'm taking political science class for this reason today I'm here. I have one question. What is your best or, yes, your best program? How, how people can access this program? And what is your vision about this program?
What is our best program?
Yes, for the city hall.
Great mayor.
[laughing]
I, I think we have the most innovative law enforcement that, that has done, done things no other city has done. What do you guys think?
Maybe someone recent.
What?
Maybe someone, eh, recent.
Recent.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Recent.
Yeah. She wants an example of a recent program. Law enforcement is constant, though it's every day. Though it's very recent.
Okay.
Well, I, I love the drone, but I guess that's not, it's not recent anymore, is it? Or any of you.
Yeah.
Lancaster Choice Energy, okay? We have our own energy company. Today, we're, we can say that instead of putting solar on your home, we can put it in a field, you know, 10 miles from here, and you don't have to have all the solar on your field, but we can send the energy that that creates back to your home with Lancaster Choice Energy. And we can do it cheaper than putting it on your home, and we can do it more, the aesthetic value of it is better. We can do that for the entire state of California. So with Lancaster Choice Energy, we not only give our citizens the ability to have cheaper rates, but we give them more options.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Did you have one?
Ashley. Ashley, I was going to say that it's not necessarily a program, but we have our youth commission, and it is, consists of five high school students from different schools throughout Lancaster. And what they do is they're trying to combat hunger, and they are putting together a program to be able to feed children from ages K through six over the weekend. And I commend them for taking on such a huge project, but we have commissions that have their whole heart into making the city of Lancaster a better place to live and work, so.
You know, if I was gonna vote on the best program we have, it would be the Neighborhood Impact Homes. You know, I think we've got some incredibly innovative stuff going on here, but that's the best one, I would bet. Okay? Okay, Benjamin Zimmerman?
Good evening. I am Benjamin Zimmerman. I too am from ABC studying political science and have been, you know, requested to come in here and take, you know, participate in one of your meetings. My question, I have a roughly 13-year career in the water industry in some way, shape, or form. And in light of our rains and how much snow Northern California has seen, what will the city's stance be moving forward with this, you know, reserve of water? Are you going to maintain the mandates on keeping water restrictions, or are you going to, you know, ease up and tell everybody, "Go ahead and have green grass again"?
Well, I haven't seen any indication that the drought is over. It's just it's been relieved somewhat. It's certainly not over in Southern California yet. And every projection out there is that this is just a gift that may not be duplicative, duplicative next year, right? I mean, we don't have any, we don't see any changes in regards to landscaping ordinances. Does that answer your question?
It does phenomenally. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And I was, I've been thinking again about, you know, the best program we have.
[laughing]
He's gonna answer it.
And, and that part of, and that part of me that my wife says I should keep quiet wants to say, "The Bounty Program."
Which is not a city program.
I think we're moving on now.
She would, she would be so proud of you for keeping quiet on that one. All right, yeah, I know.
And, and Allison's trying to point out it's not a city program.
Allison has pointed out it's not a city program.
You know, I did that after Sergeant Owens was killed by a blood, and five more bloods have been arrested for implicated in his death. And I think I want to raise it to $2,000. There is nothing more detrimental to this community than those gangs, just so everybody's clear. Sean Crawford? Come on down, Sean.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sean Crawford. I too am a student of political silence, science, but it should just be silent. But, I really have no idea what I want to ask you guys, so I'm just gonna--
No, 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 no. You gotta go sit down and come up with something.
All right.
Nobody gets to walk like that.
Let me get to that.
Collaborate, collaborate with your colleagues there, and then you can come back. Kimberly Rodriguez. Don't you cop out like that, Kimberly.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Rodriguez. I am as well a, a ABC student, also in political science. I just had a simple question. What is the best thing you like about your position as a mayor?
What's the best thing I like about what?
Your position as a mayor.
I, I think that with this particular city staff and council, that we're actually making some real progress in changing how the world works for a better, in a better way. And I, you know, I had, I had prayed that's what we would be able to do, but I didn't think we would when I got elected. And it's exceeded all of my expectations. It, it's truly astonishing what happens when a group of people set out to improve the, the well-being of everybody that lives here, what, what occurs. And I, and I can honestly say that truly is the, the goal of the vast majority, that we want to improve the well-being of every single person that lives in Lancaster, and that their life experience is something better than if they had lived somewhere else. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Oh, how did I do that? Oh, no, we still have Sean coming back. Maria. We have these two. Oh, we got these two. I just didn't want to end with you.
Oh, yeah. No wonder if you listen to all this, why I'm feeling so sick. Does the Church of Satan consider it a, one of those groups, or one of those gangs? I'd like to know, because I'm sick of all the, the control manipulation that we've been facing here lately. And I think--
Get ready for more.
Well, get ready for more, huh? Oh, it's been lovely. It's just been wonderful, okay? And I think we need to get them out of our schools, out of our judicial system, out of our medical system, out of our everything system. And especially what's happening, listening to you tonight about, you know, what's, what's could be happening with our children and this whole tracking deal and this, you know. Something needs to be done quick because we are in some big trouble, problems. And it keeps going and going, and it needs to stop. Well, we gonna do anything about it, or what?
I'm assigning it to the vice mayor.
It needs to be, something needs to be done about it. It needs to be out of our education system.
He's in charge.
Our judicial system, now our prison system, our, you know.
The prison system--
It's a mess. And no wonder I'm feeling sick, why we're sick all the time, you know? Ice kids all have problems and stuff.
Come on, Maria.
Yeah.
Enjoy life. Everything doesn't have to be negative. Heather Brown, come on down.
I haven't forgot you, Sean. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. How are you? I, I hope you're feeling better. I didn't know you had surgery. Recently, I've had some more experiments come to light. I have some data for you. Of course, I always have data for you. But in a lighter note, the discussion about the cannabis, I actually was bored one night and I did some research on that. The cannabinoids actually are really good, and as research has proven, they're really good for brain injuries. So like football--
No, no, no.
Well, no, they, they have been proven because they reduce inflammation. The cannabinoids reduce inflammation in your brain. So say you have to have surgery or an injury, like football injuries, they actually reduce the inflammation and help your brain repair itself and establish--
Yeah, Heather, I think you're probably right, but the, the National Academy of Sciences came, report came out and confirmed that, yeah, it is a gateway drug.
Oh, well, I don't know.
And, and I'm a recovering drug addict, so that's something I just can't--
Well, I was gonna say, I have 10 acres out on 103rd and Dawn if you guys want to set up shop out there, so [laughing] I was gonna offer that to you. But in a lighter note, I have a current experiment.
The thing I'm trying, and I'll give you some more time.
Okay.
But the thing I'm trying to clarify here is that we really could have a discussion where you don't walk in with a position set in stone one way or the other.
Right.
And that you're open to being persuaded one way or the other.
About, about facts. Things that are factual--
Based upon the facts, yeah.
Yes. Well, God made it, so I would think as long as we don't combine it with something else, right? I, I don't know. I don't know that much about it, so.
Okay.
But, you know, I do have the property. If you guys want something way out there.
So tell me about the data.
But the current experiment that I have been collecting data on is about the lizards and the amphibians, and it's, it includes the water. And as you know, I've replumbed my house and have reverse osmosis and granulated activated carbon filters, 600,000 gallons. So anything that comes into my house or property is filtered. So no water, even sprinkler and hose is filtered.
You mean either your grass is healthy?
Yes. Well, that's the problem, is I still am having really high readings on a certain thing, but I'm trying to see if it affects, because there's a lot of beetles, right, killing our trees, and a lot of roaches and a lot of ants. I know I have so many ants. But the, the predators for these little pests can't be poison, because the pesticides that they're currently using on the crops, on the crops are basically what is not killing them is in the water. So we need to cut down on that and use something less. But I think that if we eliminate the, the pesticides, that might cut down on some of the non-filterable elements that are in the water currently. I don't know if you want to look into that, but I also have the Google Map quest of the property that I was gonna have him go show you. I don't know if he took you out there on a little tour, but if you want to see that, I will be here afterwards to show you. Thank you.
John Winter. Not yet, not yet. Who's, where's John Winter? Okay. You're next, Sean.
About the year 2001, 2000, I was a correctional officer, which was working at Lancaster Prison, and was the one who was assaulted during all those cell phone raids. Suffered damage to my neck, injury, neuropathy at arm, permanent stationary damages. And I went back to work because I love my job. Was prescribed Percocet. Started acting abnormal, didn't realize it. One of my write-ups was right after I saved an inmate's life. I was called into the watch office. And I told this watch sergeant, "I can't come to work because I was totally on narcotics. I just came back from a MRI because some of their stuff was happening." He didn't want to hear my explanation because of other officers. So other officers were calling in sick because of all the overtime. So I was ordered to come in, in the watch office, sitting there writing my report why I saved this inmate's life because I was actually supposed to be on permanent disability, you know, dirt disability, you know, position. Anyway, associate warden Fakori comes in there, and right away in my head, I'm thinking of Indian jokes, the one about, I have no idea, I don't know this guy, but he's like a barroom buddy to me all of a sudden. I'm, I'm totally, I'm not even myself. I don't even know why I'm acted that way. Took me about a week after I got written up trying to figure out what happened. But anyway, this condition, I couldn't realize it because it was a dream world. You know, it's like, he, so, so he's in there, and I'm kinda like just bouncing around, and, you know, "Why'd you get your name?" Or, "How'd you get your name?" He's all like, "Oh, we're a proud, you know, Iranian family," you know, some, some Fakori name. And I'm kinda like just thinking about that Indian joke about, you know, like, why are the Indians sitting up on the hilltop? You know, like, "Where the F.R.? We right?" And I said, "How'd you get..." You know, and, and, and he just looks at me out of character, and, and I'm just kinda like beaming, totally not knowing what's going on, thinking, you know, he's my, you know, "We're just joking. Here's, here's how I'm, I supposed to act. This is how I supposed to act."
Thank you.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Huh?
Thank you. You're out of time. All right. Okay. Thank you. Sean? You got us all breathlessly waiting in anticipation for this.
I came up with three questions.
Three, okay.
Okay. My first question is, how do you decide which street gets put on a diet?
Gets put on what?
Put on diet. I guess it's to make a street diet for less traffic?
Like the one we did over there on, about Central Way, where we put the bike lanes-- A street diet?
Yeah, it's to make, it's for less traffic or so.
Good question. Jeff?
What, what makes us look at different types of streets for road diets or complete streets is traffic collisions. We look at pedestrians, bicycles, how the roads actually in reality used, and we go from there.
Awesome. Thank you. Say that again?
What a great question. The mayor had no idea.
Oh, thank that guy. He gave me the, he gave me the question. Thank that guy. He gave me the question. My second question is, because I just learned about this, this morning in my political science class, was the different types of mayoral systems or city systems that we have such-- class, was the different types of mayoral systems or city systems that we have, such as mayor council systems and council management systems. I just want to know, which one are we? I understand that we still have a mayor, but council management systems also have a mayor, but he only serves as a figurehead.
Well...
To my understanding, it's that he serves mainly as a figurehead, but he has no power to veto, except in the case of San Jose.
When we amended the charter, I wanted to put in a veto provision, veto provision, and the city manager talked me out of it. And as I've gone on since then, I've really resented him for that. There's actually three kinds, if you wanted it broadly, you know. You got where the council rotates it, you know, theoretically, they elect a member to be the mayor. And that's called a weak mayor. No. And then you have, what we do is elected, it's a general, the general vote of the people. But you have... Brett had my back there, thank you, Brett. Then you have the strong mayor position, which would be like Eric Garcetti down in Los Angeles where he doesn't actually sit on the council, but he runs the city.
Understandable.
And then you have what we have, you know, where I sit on the council and we have a city manager, but it is open to dispute as to who's running it on any given day.
So it's more of a, so it's, it's a, it's a council, it's a council management system, but like the mayor does still retain his powers, such as like in San Jose, where they run a council management, but they allowed the, they allowed for the mayor to have powers of veto.
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of have a hybrid because the mayor appoints everybody, you know, every commission and all that. But the city, the city council can override him at any time, or they have to approve what he does, actually.
Yeah, absolutely.
And what I've attempted to do was, was actually spread, spread the authority out, both on the council and onto the commissions. And because what we've discovered is that if you have a lot of small groups but are empowered, you have a really vibrant city. And that's what I'm attempting to get.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, you know, like just the city's in the close proximity to us, their mayor will sit on everything. And I don't do that, you know? I want powerful people sitting around me so that it's, you know? And I resent the people that come onto this council and just warm a seat and go to the parties and say, I'm a councilman. And without working. I really have run into them in the past and have resented them.
No, I completely agree. That's just, that actually, it's kind of like my thing, because I'm, I am a veteran of the United States. I know I don't look like I'm any older than 18.
You don't.
But I am. I am 25 years old.
No kidding.
But it's the, I feel the exact same way, just like when I would see officers that didn't know anything about what we were doing and then talk about how they were the best ones in the group.
Well, that's why you have fragging.
Yeah, but that's, trust me, I don't like to deal with the military's politics. But my third question is, how does a veteran such as myself go about, because I do want to work in the, in the city, for the city, but I don't want to do something such as law enforcement or fire department or AMS, like something that's traditional. I do just want to work in the city. And how exactly would a veteran go about finding jobs to, that would fit his or her needs?
Are you asking about employment, meaning salary?
Yeah. No, just, just, just employment, just employment.
You see that guy with the tie right there? Oh, they both got ties, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, he's just going to send you down the, down the... So start with Jason.
Okay.
And tell Jason that I would think, I think it's a really good idea to take a really good look at you, to see if there is a place where we could add you to the, to the staff.
All right, cool. Yeah, that makes sense. It's great. Thank you. Thank you guys for your time. Wonderful day.
Sean, thank you for your service.
No problem. Thank you for it.
Wasn't that a great interview? I mean, I mean, he saved it to the very end and said, give me a job.
That is a great mayor system. But you were asking, I was in the United States Navy.
If they don't give you a job, come see me at the office.
I will.
Okay? Good. Now, where's Myra? Is Myra here?
Over there.
She'll get, hey, Sean, she'll get you in. Okay?
Awesome. I'll see you.
All right, good, thank you. Well, I don't know about you all, but I had a great time. I thought it was, it was one of our better meetings, I think. And with that, are there any comments from the council? Any comments from the planning commission? Any comments from the criminal justice commission? Then, the city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, February 14th, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done. I'm coming home, and I'm really kind of sorry about that remark. I'll talk to you.[1791.66]